To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And I'll call this meeting to order. Members here present are Darrell Baker, Terry Matthews, and first in order is approval of the minutes for the special session Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on July 17th, 2014 at 6:00 p.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That being unanimous, the motion carries. The next is approval minutes for the special session Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on August 1st, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, the motion carries. We are now on public comment. And first is Mr. Sharp regarding litter and dilapidated buildings.
Well, about my favorite subject, litter. Do we have a litter officer?
No, we do not. Not right now.
Are there any plans to get one?
Yes, we do have a budgeted, it's in our budget, yes.
The dilapidated building, do we have a committee for that?
We do have a committee.
When they have a meeting, is it open to the public?
Yes.
Is it publicized in the newspaper?
I don't know that.
No.
No.
So, how do I know so I want to attend?
I understand. But I'll tell you what we can do, is we can actually put that on our website and possibly advertise that in the paper.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
What's your first name?
Leroy.
Leroy, okay. With the Helping Hands Food Pouch.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that our pantry is a year old today. We are on 445 Cherry Street. We are being moved probably in the next month to downtown because our pantry is too big for the church that we're in right now. We're in contact with the city right now of using their old building and are only back today. And I just want to let you know that we, last month, we served 1,240 people, or 620 families. Why I'm here today is we-
Slow down, I'm gonna write that down.
Okay. I got a copy of it for you.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That's one I have to turn in to the FDA. We're open every Tuesday, not like other pantries around here. We do have a clothing department, too. This year, in November, with the Facing Hunger Program, we're getting winter jackets for handing out to kids. Each family will receive one coat per child. Why I'm really here for is, we need some help right now. Time is hard for us. We don't, mostly all of our money is coming from my brother and his wife working, and my wife is working, too, and I'm with disability. And we're, and we do have hot dog sales and all that, but that's the only way we're raising money. And right now, we are in a little jam right now, so we want to keep buying the food and keep giving it out. I do do the welfare office, they do emergency orders, they call us, we do at least 10 a week for people before they get their food stamps. But we give food away every Tuesday, and all I can say is, last week, we did 125 families. It's averaging about over 600 families. And plus, I do the backpack program through, I just met with Facing Hunger Food Bank, and now I have three schools this year. I have West Hammond, which is 29 kids that will be getting food for the weekends, I deliver it on Friday to them. Hammond, I'm doing 49 kids this year, we did 38 last year. And I'm also doing Midway, which is 26 kids. Now, it will grow when the counselors and the teachers find that the kids might need some food. And we deliver it every Friday, they get two breakfasts, two lunches, two dinners, and a snack. We deliver it on Friday, and we come back on Monday, pick up the backpacks with the kids, bring them in. If not, we just put it in bags and deliver it to the counselors. We don't know the kids, we just give it to the counselors, and they know who the kids are. So I just want to ask if we look at our application and see if we do need some grants.
So you've already, you put in your application?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the, this is different than the Helping Hands from the other ones.
Morrisville.
So you all-
Did you all apply last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
As when we first started.
Did you receive money last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
When we first started, yeah, we were serving like 200 and some people a month, now we're over 1,000 people almost every month. And we're trying to hit a goal of like 2,000. That's why we have to move out of there and get into a place where it's going to be big enough to handle all the food and all. You know, because there's a lot of people that are up in the hollers and stuff, that they can't get out just once a month. So this way, having four times they can come here, they can call off my phone, I got a page on the internet, everything, if they need food, well, they have to just call me, and I'll meet them right there. You know, and that's where I want to, just to keep doing this that way, that way, nobody gets hungry.
Right. Well, I want to explain something to you. In our contribution policy, our contribution policy states that we give every other year. And that might be something that we can look at, you know, we could, you know, we can amend the policy, and I think that was a work in progress as we were born, so that's something that I'm sure that we can consider tonight. Next is Michael Foravante?
Yeah. Pure Avante.
Good.
Pretty good.
Concerning water.
Yeah, I'm going to commend the actions of the board the other day when you took those four motions concerning Lincoln PSD. I appreciate that very much, I was one of those persons that was immediately affected by that. And I attended the meeting on July 24th, I think it was, down at the PSD. I was shocked at the way some people were treated, and I was shocked at the way I was treated and my wife was treated at that meeting. We had some valid concerns there and issues that were very important, water's very important, and to have it shut off like it did was very dramatic for us. And so I think the motions that you took, I think are real important, I hope you follow up with that. We did receive an order from the Public Service Commission that the PSD was to immediately turn the water back on for us. And I appreciate what the commission did, and just wanted to let you know that.
And I want to say thank you, too.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you. And it was important for us, we had initially, a couple weeks ago, we're going to come over here and complain bitterly about the issue, but it seems like the board's taking some good action. I don't know what's going on down there, I'm very concerned, I think it seems like you are, too. And I'm going to volunteer my services if you should need me to help you on anything down there. I'm a professional civil engineer here in the state of West Virginia, and I've designed water systems all across the state. So if there's any help you may need, you can call me to do that. Also, if there's anything that you want me to talk about, about what went on at that meeting, I'll be happy to do that, too, at any time you want. How do you feel we're going to be moving forward on this?
Anybody? You want to address? I will. Well, we sent out, basically, we sent out our, you know, the things that, you know, our power as the county commission, what we can do.
Right.
We currently have, of course, our prosecutor is looking at, you know, any wrongdoing that has taken, you know, if it was, if it has taken place, and then he would report back to us if there is wrongdoing. And if I remember, I think it's Chapter 16 of the state code, basically says that a county commission can petition the circuit court to remove members. And in the same breath, so the PSD, they can do that as well.
Okay.
So if there's anything like that, that we would have to do.
Okay.
But-
Well, once again, I want to thank you, I thought you did the right thing. And again, I'm volunteering my services to help you at any time on any of those issues down there.
You live in Lincoln, you might have said, right?
Yes, I live over at Tiny Ridge Road, it's over there at Priestley Grove, lived out there about 27 years.
Across from Priestley Grove.
Across from Priestley Ridge. And we've been getting our water down there at the PSD for about 10 years or so. Our well was affected by mining, and so we've been getting our water there for a long time.
I think, you know, we're trying, like the president said there, we've done everything that we can, we're in the process, this is a process, you know, we, all these people are looking at these different things and things of that nature. While things thinking down the road, if it doesn't preclude you from serving, you know, there are positions kind of available, I mean, returns expiring and things like that on that PSD board, if you would be eligible for that, it would seem to me like you'd be a good person for that, so I would-
Okay. Yeah, I've done a lot of water systems, I know all the engineering companies that you're dealing with very well.
And I think, you know, because I think we're going to get by this, I think we're working on trying to figure out exactly how to handle this permanent, these things, but just looking down the road, you know, we want, this commission's always trying to put the most able person in particular areas to work with particular things, and with your background, it seems to me that you'd be an actual for this type of position. So as we go through the next several months, year or so, or if something would happen sooner, it would be something that would probably benefit you and the community and us if you think about applying for a position on that board.
Okay.
We were surprised when we read in the Lincoln County Journal, there was only two applicants or something like that, too, you would think that there would be more.
The last time that, whenever, I think it was for McMillan, whenever he was appointed, there was two applicants, and one didn't live in the district.
Yeah, we live over there, our address is really Samerco, is how we get our mail, 430 Tiny Ridge Road, Samerco. Yeah, the way the district, the way the post office is run, they run in large areas, but we've got, we've lived out there for about 27 years or so. Will there be any more discussion on this tonight?
I don't have anything on the agenda for that tonight.
Then we'll probably go, but once again, we want to thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rick McDow with the Camp Lake view update and a courthouse roof.
Let me do the camp lake view first?
Yes. I understand that a little better. I just wanted to give you, I haven't given you any updates for a while on Camp Lake view. What you got there is, we keep a tabulation of water, samples that we do at the lake itself, where the swimming area is for the kids, that's what we're sampling. And when we first started doing it in 99, we were looking at both total coliforms and E. coli. And one of the things that we learned as we went through this project was that total coliforms can include things like rotting wood and other kind of naturally occurring things, while E. coli is just coming out of the gut of warm-blooded animals. So E. coli is a much better indicator of serious water problems than total coliforms. So we've sort of concentrated on E. coli, and if you look at the chart, over 15, over the 15 years, we've done 46 samples, and we've had two that have been over the limit that we've set, the 200 colonies per 100 milliliter. So we're pretty happy with, you know, the fact that that's a safe place for us to be going out to programs with our kids, so that's just an update on that. And we've still got a week left with the three Wednesdays, but as long as I'm talking about the camp, I give you this. This year, we're only going to have 10 different days, last year, we had, I mean, nine different days, last year, we had 10. So this is just the spreadsheet on how much money we've spent, we're averaging four and a half dollars per person who comes out, and this is a little bit, that's not bad, it's really better than any year that we've done so far. We've also had a lot of people, the fewest we've had, one week we had 13, and the most we had, one week we had eight, so we were a little short on peanut butter and jelly sandwiches that week.
It's hard to gauge.
It is hard to gauge. And we've had a variety of, mainly church groups providing their lunches for the kids, so that's going to, I think it's going to be a real good program, because we've got a core group that keeps coming, who ride the Tri River buses, really glad the Tri River supports that, kids from housing projects and low-income trailer ports and so forth. So that's real good. If you have any questions about either of those, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Okay, and then I wanted to talk a little bit about, the court have ordered a house roof, and get some direction from the commission on this, Mary and I have been working on this for a while. Back in February and March, we talked about how to move forward on this issue, okay? Under state statute, there's a West Virginia code, 5G-1-1, and it's about architectural and engineering firms, and an entity like the county commission can advertise and choose a firm like that, an architectural firm or an engineering firm, to take care of a project, which would mean the firm itself would do the bid specs, put out the bidding, oversee the project and all that kind of stuff. So back in, was it March? Back in March, we sent out a variety of different firms, I don't know how many, I'll bring it up.
I think we sent to five.
Five?
Yeah, we've got three response.
Well, I choose AM and-
E.L. Robinson.
E.L. Robinson.
Not Gracher. ZMM, Sillling, S-I-L-L-I-N-G, that group, and E.L. Robinson.
So we got that. So the step that we can, we can do now, that the commission can do, because it's under $250,000, under $250,000, commission can evaluate and pick one of these firms. And then the firm would, after you pick the firm, then you negotiate with the firm and come up with a price. It seems a little backwards that the firm would be paid to do all this kind of stuff, but that's the way the code works out. So the next step could be if the, if the commission wants us to, I mean, Mary and I, and if you wanted to point any more people, could actually sit down, look at these things called statements or qualifications that we've gotten from these three firms, and make a recommendation to the commission to pick a firm, and then we would go into negotiations and agree on a price. If we did it that way, we could bring you all three of those things, you could look through all of them.
I would get one.
But it is a backwards kind of anti-intuitive process.
I figured, I mean, since you've been dealing with, I know Mary's been dealing with, maybe you and Mary, and maybe Ron, and Ron is here.
Uh-oh.
Okay, then you all could, I mean, you all could pick-
Yeah, maybe, maybe just rank those three.
Yeah, just rank, rank three, and then say, this is our number one, this is our number two, and things like that. And then what we can do on the next, we can tell you why, what the reasons that we think this is the number one based on there. Because we need to get this at the end of that meeting, so we can get this sorted.
And then my, the way I think this would work, you would say, yep, we're going to take this firm, and then we'd go into negotiations with them and say, okay, this is a $200,000 project, how much are you going to charge us to do this? And they would know that, you know, if they charged 10 bucks, there'd be that much left to do the project.
Okay. Sounds good? Okay, that's what we do.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll bring you something next time.
All right. Next is Ron Jefferson with the Lincoln County Green Waste Water.
Evening commissioners. Well, I want to give you guys some updates on phase five, you know, where we're at progression-wise, as well as kind of unfortunate bad news for the future. So we'll start with the progress. Last week, we finished up three installations, two out of contract one and one out of contract two, so moving right along there, which is good. You know, I was on site for all three, been working weekends sometimes here and there, wherever it's needed. For some strange reason, our contractor has only been able to work on some weekends, you know, the Fridays and Saturdays, which unfortunately can sometimes extend the project a little longer in terms of time-wise, but he's moving now real well, so that's good. So been doing that. Unfortunately, we're really not looking at any more construction phases. The DEP kind of alluded to us back in May that there might not be any more money for any other phases, you know, so we went to the DEP in July, and, you know, we met with them, and we said, okay, you know, is this for real, you know, is there really not going to be any more money, or is there, you know, is there any way we can get any more money? They kind of acted like, the whole deal is, there's no more green wastewater money per se. You know, there were a couple of other departments, we discussed the possibility of maybe looking at a research-oriented phase as opposed to a construction phase, which would be more sample-taking, more maintenance-related, trying to, you know, get that squared away and working as long as possible, but we really haven't had any fruitful efforts into that. You know, we emailed some people, talked to some other people in different departments, nothing's really come of that, unfortunately. So I'm going to keep working until the end, hard as I can, you know, getting all the construction done, wrapping everything up as best as possible. At one point, we had three people we had to find replacements for because they had dropped out of the project after it was bid. I decided, I just kind of made it an executive decision, I guess, that instead of installing new systems, we had some systems that we knew needed worked on, so I just chose to use that money on those previous systems that we already had, make sure they were working efficiently, and fix anything that needed to be fixed. So that's pretty much where we're at. I just wanted to also thank you guys for the opportunity of working with us, really enjoying being here. Yeah, thank you, Rick, for being a good mentor to me and teaching me the ropes, and so we'll see how it goes, keep on working, and you'll see me a couple more meetings, I figure, you know, I think based on our frames, we might have a couple months left in terms of the money-wise, so we'll just keep using it as much as we can.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, appreciate that. Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, I think you've got your shorts where I got my shirt.
Matching, right?
All right, next on the agenda is discussion, possible concern action. I don't think you're like that.
He's not like that.
Yeah.
But he's here.
All right, but it's that ground with the Region Two drawdown request for Big Hearts Water Project Phase One.
Yes. We actually had a few drawdowns, so since I had to do a mic head one, that's always a place. The first one I had tonight is for the Big Hearts Project. It is a small cities block grant drawdown, number five. The total amount of the drawdown is $48,584.03. That goes to pay the Region Two Planning and Development Council $1,584.03 for administrative work, and E.L. Robinson Engineering $47,000 for engineering services. This project currently is, it's gone to bid, and the contract's been awarded for construction. It's my understanding that welding is on site now, doing work at the tank site, and both the other two contractors should be there, they might have actually already been setting up today, but work should start within the next week or two. Outside of that, I think Mike Tomic Construction is scheduled to last almost a year, so it should be next summer before it's actually complete.
So we need permission for the president to authorize any-
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That being unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you.
I think the Lincoln County company got part of it, Big Hearts Project.
So it was welding, actually, it's on the post, it's right on the front, I think, Todd Schnacki, is that?
Schnacki.
Schnacki, yeah, good. And Mike, in your sense, I believe you've got the third, Tom Schnacki.
This is a project that comes down, I mean, to school or in that area, is that where we're talking about?
I believe so. Okay. The second drawdown I have tonight is for the Francis Creek Waterline Extension Project. It is the small cities block grant drawdown number four. The total amount of the drawdown is $22,043.12. That goes to pay Region Two Planning and Development Council $480.78 for administrative work, and Griffithon Associates $21,562.34 for accounting work. This project's currently, Rick Robertson spoke to today, they have to go to bid for this project in the next three to four months. I'm currently working on the environmental clearance, so that we're prepared to go to bid whenever design's complete and engineering's ready. That's about the status of this one for now.
Okay. We have a motion to give the president authorization to some of the drawdown requests for the Francis Creek Project?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That being unanimous, the motion carries.
And the third drawdown I have tonight is for the Ten Mile Creek Waterline Extension Project. This is an Appalachian Regional Commission drawdown number 15, the amount of $2,636.43. And the entire amount goes to pay Region Two Planning and Development Council for administrative work. This project's construction is complete now, I believe everyone's receiving their service. There's actually some project funds left over in the IJDC funding source, we're able to get approval for the PSD to use that money to buy some new water meters, which they pretty badly needed from our stand, so they've now been able to get those funds and purchase new water meters. With all funds being expended, except for what remains in the ARC grant, project is in closeout mode, we're getting all the paperwork done administratively, and I should be here within the next month or two with a final performance report to close the project.
Good question. Do you need the other two commissioners to sign?
Yes.
You need to hand that over by the-
How much was that drawdown?
The total. The total of the drawdown, $2,636.43.
Okay.
So we have a motion to give the president authorization to sign the drawdown request?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That being unanimous, carries.
I think that's everything.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
All right. You may want to check those to make sure we got them.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, I put on here, I spoke with David Webb, and we were talking about some things that the Guyanese Conservation District might be able to help us with, so what I also want to do is issue a formal request to Steve Bilbous and David Webb with the Guyanese, with the Guyanese Conservation District, to, to look at our flooding issues that we have from, from the Hammond area all the way back to the Yawkey area, and see if they can get the Guyanese Conservation District, I keep saying Guyanese Valley, but the Guyanese Conservation District to, to look at that and, and help us probably come up with a solution to our flooding issues. Bringing in an agency to help us. I was, put this on the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and get something out to them, to kind of commission them to begin, you know, let them know that we want them to help us if they, if they possibly can. Do I have a motion to send a request to them?
So, I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
to look at our flooding issues that we have from the Hammond area all the way back to the Yawkey area, and see if they can get the Gann Valley Conservation District, I keep saying Gann Valley, but the Gann Conservation District to look at that and help us probably come up with a solution to our flooding issues. Bring in an agency to help us. I was, put this on the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and get something out to them, to kind of commission them to begin, you know, let them know that we want them to help us if they possibly can. Do I have a motion to send a request to them?
Seven.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, motion carries. No unfinished business? If you look at the new business-